Good morning, it's Wednesday, November 27th, 2019. This is a regular meeting of Commissioners' Court of Grimes County, Texas. We are at 114 West Buffington Avenue, at which time we would ask that you turn your phones to the side. Perfect. I didn't say I was. Now that we have our phones on silent, would you please stand for our invitation, remain standing for our pledges to the U.S. and the Texas flag. The podium is yours, sir.
Thank you, sir. Let us pray. Gracious Lord, our heavenly Father, we come thanking you for this opportunity, once again, to be in the presence of those that you've commissioned here today. Bless the jurors, bless the commissioners, bless all of the clerks, bless the county attorney, and all those who are involved in the county as workers today, Lord. We ask, Lord, blessings again for those who are firefighters and first responders, for those who are constables. And Father, as we go into this meeting, we invite you in to may help us make the decisions that will be everlasting, not only for our county, our townships, but our state and the rest of the world. We thank you for what you've done, and we ask, Lord, that you would bless us during this Thanksgiving holiday. In Jesus' name we pray.
Thank you so much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
You be seated, please.
Judge, I think it's probably a little too late to give a pardon to all the hams, pigs, and turkeys, right?
Most of them are on the grill or in the oven, but it's a generous thought on your part, sir. That will take us to public comments. Ms. Merritt, did we have any others than the one I submitted?
Nobody stopped.
Nobody? Okay. Well, my public comment is, I hope that everybody here and everybody out in viewing the world has a happy Thanksgiving, remember what it's all about, that we're thankful for the things that we have, and hopefully it's peaceful and safe for each and every one of you and your families. If you're on the roads, please be careful. Are there any other, no other public comments that were submitted? With that, we will go to consent agenda items number three, number four, number five, number six. Number three is consider and take action to approve the treasurer's list of claims and bills. Agenda item number four, consider and take action to approve payroll. Agenda item number five, approve monthly reports submitted by the county treasurer for October 2019, unauthorized advertisement of affidavit of same in accordance with local government code 114.026, which is page five of this agenda. And consent agenda item number six, consider and take action to approve budget amendments and/or line item transfers. With that, Commissioners, I yield to you, do you have any comments or questions? Commissioner Cox?
I do have a question on the budget amendment, the fire hydrant. Will that money be coming out of the general fund balance, or will that be coming out of Roden Bridge?
It'll be coming out of Roden Bridge, because we've been budgeting it in Roden Bridge and haven't used it for several years, so it's going to...
Are there any other questions on any of the consent agenda items?
If no one else has any questions, I make the motion that we approve consent agenda items three, four, five, and six.
Second.
Second.
Too late. I have a motion by Commissioner Walker to approve consent agenda items three, four, five, and six, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Is there further discussion or comment? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We will now continue very quickly to agenda item number seven, Commissioner Dobianski, precinct two, consider and recognize the following employee for their years of service, Isabel Gallegos, five years of service. Ms. Gallegos, Commissioner?
My pleasure, this morning, good presentation. Isabel Gallegos, five-year pin, thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you so much.
Matt, if you can bring it around here, I could photobomb it.
And you look beautiful.
Congratulations.
Thank you, ladies.
There goes the support team. All right. By request, Commissioners, if there's a non-issue, I'd like to bring agenda item number 11, emergency services manager David Lilly, review and approve the firefighting services contract with Anderson and Iowa Volunteer Fire Departments and authorized county judge's signatory. I'd like to bring that up before agenda item number eight, as they need to get back and monitor their stations, I think. Is that right, Sue?
Yes.
Mr. Lilly?
Yes, Judge, Commissioners. First, I'd like to point out, we do have the fire chief from Anderson, Chief Commissioner, and we also have representatives from the Iowa Fire Department here, Bob Leapers, the head, the president of the ESD, correct, sir?
Treasurer.
Treasurer, okay.
More important than the president.
Yeah. Also, I would point out that I put a hard copy in everybody's box of a current version that's before you today for consideration. The only change that we made, there's actually two that we don't want to point out, one is on page two, you look under 4.05, 4.05c, that paragraph has been expanded to clarify qualifications must be approved by a certified instructor, which it had said before, but also in the absence of such, certified by the fire chief and be approved by the emergency national services coordinator. This is referring to any specialized capabilities where there is no certified training available at this time, such as use of UTV. There was some confusion about adding items like that on the tear page as to whether it was referring to capabilities as an individual's using the equipment or the equipment itself, so we felt it was necessary to clarify that.
Chief Morris brought that to our attention, did he not?
Yes, sir, Chief Morris and also Chief Commissioner. The other change is paragraph D, referring to, and this is an additional paragraph specifying or clarifying the certification or the capability of EMS, that this is only and reflects, only reflects the capability that firefighters have, this is, and to differentiate that from the role of the EMS. When they're responding to an incident, whether it's a fire or an accident, they're responding as firefighters as a part of that fire department, and their EMS background is what we call force extender that gives them more capabilities to be able to work with their fire departments. They are not to act or perform the role of EMS in that capacity.
Could you back up a minute and give me that location of where you're referring to that?
On page two, paragraph four, 0.05, training program, and I'm looking at paragraph C and D.
And D is going to read what now?
Does yours have a paragraph D, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay, because I want to make sure I got the current copy for everybody. Again, this was added, and it specifies the role of EMS or the qualification of EMS for firefighters, that certifications reflect only such additional capabilities for the fire departments themselves. Firefighters with EMS certifications are under the authority of their fire chief and serve as firefighters with EMS capabilities, not EMS.
This is the copy that he put in our box that was in the back.
Okay.
And you have reviewed that with the chiefs, and that language meets with their acceptance, correct?
I believe so.
Chief Commissioner, yes?
I'm good with that, I just clarify what we...
Sure. Mr. Leaper?
Yes.
Okay.
So, Mr. Lilly, the contract that we're looking at today, that was provided by you, is different than the contract with the other fire departments?
Yes. And that's kind of in keeping with what we know is going to happen as this progresses. Each fire department negotiates its own contract with the county, and subsequent versions of the contract will include these other elements for all the fire departments as we go forward, but for now, the contracts that are in place for the fire departments that we've already, that you have already approved, those are still in good standing.
Commissioner, it would be our desire, by the time next year rolls around, we'd have a uniform language that would be acceptable to all eight departments, hopefully.
Yes, and I will also add to that, as I've mentioned before, that the changes that have taken place on all these versions of the contract over the last several months have primarily been a direct result of really good input that we've gotten from the fire departments and the fire chiefs themselves, that has helped us to hammer this out and to clarify, which is really what the process is supposed to do, is to make these contracts more realistic and to actually match what the fire departments are providing.
Are there any other questions regarding the contract language for Mr. Lilly? Not, is there a motion? Yes, sir.
These two departments, they meet the matching qualifications?
We don't look at it. The first step is to get the contract in place, and then I sit down with the fire chiefs and go with, you know, what they have, their training records and all the required documentation and determine what you're...
I move to approve the firefighting services contract with Anderson and Iowa Volunteer Fire Departments and authorized county judge's signatory with the revisions of 4.05c and the addition of a new 4.05d. Second motion. Okay. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 11 by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Just to clarify, when you just said D?
The new, the new D, it's in different order.
Okay.
As he spoke about.
Okay.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner? Okay. Are there any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Mr. Lilly, thank you.
Thank you.
Keep us safe, thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. We will now go back up to agenda item number eight, Grimes County Sheriff's Office, Lieutenant Dan Caswell, Daniel Caswell.
Yes, sir.
Morning, sir.
Judge, I want to let you all know this was actually oversight, not getting this contract done in October on my part.
And an oversight on my part is reading what the agenda item number eight is, and that's consider and take action to approve the health services agreement between Grimes County and Southern Health Partners Incorporated. That is our attachment number eight. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. But before y'all, we got the funding in place for it, but we never, I never brought the actual contract in to get it approved. Originally, we were going with the mental health through them, as you know, it didn't meet the Sandra Bland requirements, so we cut that out of the contract, and we went with our local mental health authority like we've done for years. Thought we could save money, we couldn't, but I never brought this contract back to get it approved. Like I said, y'all funded it, I just didn't bring the actual contract, we don't look at it.
What do you say, you thought you could save money?
By going through our current doctor, jail contract, through the mental health also, it saved us $10,000 a year. The problem is, they're based out of another state, so they didn't meet the Texas departments on the Sandra Bland Act, the mental health, so we ended up having to not use them for that, so we went with our standard residence value in mental health to continue the mental health services up at the jail.
So, were there changes in what we're paying them, or are they remaining the same?
The Southern Health Partners, the medical contract, it's going to be the same, because we did not opt to go with the mental health through them.
But is, did the amount change this year?
No, ma'am, y'all funded it at the $10,200 a month. We've actually already been paying them, because the money was put there, we just never got the contract from us and then signed, because I didn't bring the contract to the court to get it approved, like, oh, y'all funded it, I didn't present the actual contract.
But you've had no disruption in services?
No, ma'am, they've continued on, the money was supposed to, they're still getting paid, everyone's happy, they just notified me that they never got a contract they had approved by the court to them for their records, and I realized that was on me, because I never actually brought it to y'all.
So, do you have to transport them to MHMRC here?
No, ma'am, they come to see us now.
They come to see you?
Yes, ma'am.
That's good.
Well, they come to see the inmates. After a couple of weeks, the lieutenant does shut in the pump for himself, yes.
Jim has been seen twice.
Only two times?
And there was a few issues on C had that we discussed with Jim that actually don't apply to us, because their clause is put in for bigger agencies that would hire their staff out from underneath them, which obviously we have no desire to hire their doctors and nurses direct, so those things don't affect us at all, so they're up in there.
Okay.
Was there any other concerns, I have?
The first paragraph says amendment number one, and it's amendment number two. Amendment number one was done in May of last year. He asked that it referenced that amendment, but they didn't make that change.
It was done in 18 instead of 17?
May 17th of 2018 was amendment number one.
Okay, May 17?
Yes, ma'am.
So, we can make that modification in a motion and still move forward on this?
You do, y'all? I don't mind making a motion.
All right, sir.
I moved that we approved the health services agreement between Grimes County and the Southern Health Partners Incorporated with the noted recommended changes by the county in terms of...
Is there a second?
Okay.
Discussion, you don't need to designate you as signatory?
Yes, that's the other one, that judge, the sheriff's...
The one question I have, they won't have any issue with that date change on the amendment, would they?
No, sir, the funding was approved.
Right.
On this contract, they're still getting their money, and honestly, I didn't notice it, I've never sent one signed by you and the sheriff to them until they asked me a few weeks ago, and that's only, I just didn't catch it.
So, it will be signed by the sheriff and the judge?
Right. I'll move my motion, reflect accordingly.
Okay. Is there further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor of, or a motion has been put forth by Commissioner Mallett, been seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Commissioner Cox? Commissioner Cox, I'm on the wrong line, we jumped, I jumped. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Agenda item number nine, Grimes County, thank you, Lieutenant, Grimes County Building Maintenance Manager Al Peeler. Agenda item number nine reads, discuss and take action to approve courthouse structural repair change order proposal, see attachment number nine.
Good morning, Commissioners, morning, Judge, in our distinguished business style. I got sucked up somewhere.
Out of control.
You're welcome. So, I want to make this real clear, I'm bringing this in to, it's not a change order request, it's a change order proposal. The reason it was not in the original bid of our courthouse structural is because it wasn't related to Hurricane Harvey. The problem that we see is, I handed you a projection, five-year projection, the first of 2019, you'll see it's significantly low, it's not the unit price of 57.50 in 2019, it's $28 a square foot. That's because it was a negotiated price in this contract, so they're willing to give us that $28 a square foot on the rest of the courthouse. The projection for 2020 turns into $57.50 a square foot. That's, that's on an average pretty standard.
Can I stop you a thing?
Yes.
For clarification for the Commissioners, you might let them know what this repointing is all about.
Okay, so, repointing is, oh, I, yeah, I believe it is. Lee Evans is our general contractor, Premier Mail Works, he's here with us. Nick Swanson is the subcontractor from Everest, he's the one doing the tuck point. You want to tell him about repointing?
So, repointing is redoing the body of the standard thing?
We prefer you to come up to the podium.
Oh, okay.
Identify yourself and your company.
My name is Nick Swanson, I work for Everest Construction and Restoration. Repointing is the act of removing all the old masonry and replacing it with new masonry, and then that holds all the bricks together and makes sure you have a secure masonry envelope around the building, to make sure it's waterproof and no water or any other type of infiltration will get into the building.
Do you use the same bricks?
Yes, so we're not replacing the bricks over the whole entire building, except for in certain areas.
Thirteen.
Thirteen of them, yeah.
Thirteen.
So, but the repointing is actually in between the bricks.
Okay.
And what brought this to light is, because of the Hurricane Harvey restoration, they did approve a small portion to be redone?
Actually, I talked them into 75% of the building.
Okay. A larger than small portion?
Yes, sir. So, my thing to this is, it's a negotiated contract price, it will never get any cheaper than right now, because we have the scaffolding already there, we don't have to pay transportation costs, setup costs, tear down costs, we don't have to pay any of that, because it's already paid for.
Okay.
Seven to 10% cost increase every year is the national average across this trade. In five years, THC is going to require us to do that, that's why I did a five-year projection. They come out annually and do inspections. What I didn't catch, as your maintenance manager, the courthouse has two porches, and on the backside of one of those porches, you can stick your finger in there and not even hit a drop of mortar. What that means is, at some time, that brick could give away, and that's your second-floor hallway. So, it would be better to stabilize that now while we have it. They're going to require it to us to do this anyhow, and...
They THC?
THC, yes, sir. And, so, your projection on this is, I've been scouring the books, it's been 125 years since this has ever been repointed. Now, it's been repointed when, in 2002, where they need to make, make changes on the building, but I can't find no record of this building ever being repointed. So, you're looking, there will be nobody here that will, that will ever have to repoint this building again, and, and why we got it, we got 13 bricks that are cracked, that's, that's a structural issue, because it only, because we're not, we're hand-built bricks, so when one gives away, and we are repairing some cracks in it on the Harvey damage, but these cracked bricks will still keep going down the line, and it could, what we doing today, if we don't fix it now or pretty good timeframe, we're going to have to redo what we're doing now.
So, so, what you've put in front of us, if we do it now, it's a $90,049 additional expense?
Yes, sir.
And that's not out of the insurance money?
No.
That would have to come out of fund balance?
Yes, sir, and I have located about $85,000 that we can use that won't affect what we put aside for the building or anything.
Really?
Yeah. So, y'all just need to do the approval for the $5,049 to come out of fund balance.
$5,000 what?
$5,049.
That makes it look a little better for you.
Okay, so, Al, just to be clear, what I'm understanding, you presented me with...
Yes, ma'am.
This was a projection of, if we don't do it now, this is what it would cost in the future, because the savings is coming through, the scaffolding already being there, the repairs already occurring.
Yes, ma'am.
So, it cut the cost down from next year of being, you had $200,000, 200, thank you, $200,011, oh, I can't even read it.
$211,000.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And it would only cost $90,000 this year, and you have located $85,000 out of this year's budget by moving it around.
Not necessarily out of this year's budget, but out revenue received last year that wasn't expected.
Okay.
Good.
That, and paying off the new terminal technologies.
Right.
I got $57,000 from that, so...
And, Nick?
Yes, sir.
If the rework, I'll just call it rework, the rework that y'all do, what would be the life expectancy of that?
You could, you can expect anywhere from 50 to 75 years.
Okay, so it is fair to say, well, I'll be gone.
Right. I hope I'm still around.
Let me see.
I just ruined it.
Yeah.
But not doing this.
Corey.
She probably will, she's healthy.
Yes.
I know you've got some questions, Mr. Cox?
No, my question's been answered.
Okay.
Anybody else got any questions?
Is there a motion?
Judge, I make a motion to approve courthouse structural repair change order proposal in the amount of $90,049.
Second.
Thank you.
We're not done.
There's a motion before the court from Commissioner Cox, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. Is there further discussion on the issue?
I would like to follow up with a comment on the motion.
Sure.
Just for the purposes of the motion, it's been reported by the county auditor that it will only have a $5,000 impact on our current budget this year.
And I do have one other question for Nick, how long, or, Lee, how long is this going to extend the project? Because we currently have a May 7 completion date, sir?
30, 30 days.
So, June 7th now?
Yes.
And I think he wrote that on one of these.
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am. It's on your, it's on this one.
Yeah, one more question, because you said something, but the $57,000, was that in this year's budget?
No, that, it's in fund and balance. It's been, it's been in holding for years because of the new dawn, new, or terminal technologies, and when we closed out that contract, that left $57,000 in there that we could use.
Okay.
Okay, there's a motion on, for the court on agenda item number nine by Commissioner Cox, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. Is there additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Congratulations, thank you, fellas.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number 10, Grimes County Tax Assessor Collector Mary Ann Waters, discuss and take action to establish a temporary deputy clerk position in the tax assessor's collectors office.
Okay, Commissioners, as you all know, well, you may not know, my part-time resigned a month ago.
Didn't know.
Yes, and she has, I've been, since then, I've had posting on, I have two applications. I really want to get more applications before I pick someone. I'm asking for a temporary position in addition to the part-time that could work like maybe 12 days a year at the max, where like, two weeks ago, we were at a conference, and Danielle and myself, my chief deputy, we were at the conference, so that only left three people in our office. One of my girls was sick, and she had to come in and work because she knew they were so shorthanded. If I had this temporary position, I could have called that girl and had her come in and work that day, and then it is my part-time that left, she just can't work full-time because her husband has health issues, and she doesn't want to leave him alone for extended days in a row, but she said one day or so every once in a while, she could come in and do that. And what my proposal is, is to take 12 hours a year, would only be $960.
12 days a year.
12 days a year. And so, I would propose that I move that money from my part-time salary line and create a temporary salary line where she could, could be there, and I have the money in my budget now.
Because of the...
But you're wanting to keep that temporary position even after you hire a part-time?
Yes. So that if something happens, you know, like, like next week, I have a training that really three of us need to go to the training, but I'm not going to go because we'll be shorthanded. That'll leave two people in the office again, so I'm going to send the other two and I'm going to stay behind.
She wants it, uh, much like when...
Like Sandy does.
Yes.
Yeah.
But this person don't know about...
Yeah, but this person is trained to, to work on her computer system and everything already.
So, you already have somebody picked out for this?
Yes, yes.
It's the same person that resigned.
It's the same person that just resigned.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, she do the part-time?
No, she'd do the temporary.
The temporary. She, she was part-time, she would do your temporary, but, okay.
I think it's an advantage because she's already trained, she, she can step back in at any time that she needs to, it's just that she can't work full, I mean, the full part-time.
Correct, she can't work the full.
So, you're not looking to add any headcount, you just want to have the position available so when the crisis situation comes up, you can take care of it?
Correct.
Okay.
And this is going forward in...
Hopefully, indefinitely. Like I say, it's a nine hundred and sixty dollars is what twelve days of pay would be.
And you've already probably recaptured that with the resignation you've had for a month.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And just one other question or comment, I guess, I, I would think that since we have the salary structure and been working diligent on, on that, we would want to see a job description with regard to the temporary position?
It's, it's pretty much the same job description.
It would be the same description as my part-time.
Yeah, it'd just be a temporary.
But just add a temporarily.
We just know it goes up into that temporary position up at, like a grade one because we have a range in that part-time or temporary that goes from, what, twelve dollars an hour, eight dollars an hour to fourteen, I think.
Eight to twelve, I think, or eight, something like that, eight to twelve, eight to fourteen, something like that.
And, and would it be in a part-time position, she's having problems recruiting anyone?
Right.
Uh, for part-time positions, so, uh, she may be needed, uh, quite frequently right now.
It could be, it could be. And like I say, you know, I'm, I could, you know, flu's going around. What if I get two or three of them out with the flu? I can't make them come in and work, you know?
We don't want them to come in.
So that she would be a, uh, not, exactly, so, I mean, she would just be a backup when we have an emergency that I need an extra person there.
Sounds reasonable. And the, and the salary's covered. Is there a motion?
I'll, I'll make the motion to establish a temporary deputy clerk position in the tax assessor collector's office, uh, for twelve days annually.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number ten by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? A motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to Roden Bridge Engineer, Mary Walker, agenda item number twelve, consideration and possible approval of final plan for recon, phase one subdivision. See attachment number twelve.
Good morning, commissioners, judge. Now, this is a small subdivision that's phase one, but will eventually be a larger subdivision. Looking at County Route twenty, off of one forty-nine East St. Anderson. They, the overall plan for the project is there's a plus or minus twenty-one acre tract that they would like to develop, but they're going to do it in phases because that property is currently under agricultural exemption. And as they bring it into residential, they have to pay a three-year rollback. So, rather than take down all of that at one time, they do it over phases. They're proposing three lots of two acres each, uh, they all have funded on County Road two twenty, so there's no construction involved. Um, the other thing I'll point out, this is a final plat. Because of the changes the legislature made this session, y'all won't be seeing preliminary plats anymore, uh, and we're in a much shorter timeframe, uh, even though this is a, is very simple, small plat. The final, after my initial review of the original submittal, uh, after they responded on the fourteenth, uh, we only have fifteen days to either approve or disapprove of that plat.
Otherwise, it automatically is approved.
Otherwise, it's automatically approved, uh, and that fifteen days will be up to the end of this week, uh, just because of the timing, you know, when everything comes in, when the court meetings are, uh, we're going to be on our toes as far as getting these things reviewed and approved in timely manner. So, any questions?
Is it, I'll put you on the spot, is it fair to say that when you would put one of these in front of us, that it meets with the Roden Bridge approval, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they, uh, one of the things I've been looking at in the overall, uh, updated subdivision rules, uh, there are some forms that were done a few years ago that I've received to indicate approvals by the subdivision coordinator, nine-one-one, all those. I'm going to look at actually using those in the future so that you will have, uh, documentation, but I'm not going to bring anything to you that's not ready to go. Now, again, one of the changes that the legislature made, when we do our initial review comments, um, we don't get to add any more comments after that. If they respond to all those comments appropriately, we can't add anything new. So, we have to be very thorough and diligent on the initial review, and then if they address everything in appropriate manner, you know, it's good to go. So, it will be, it will, when it, when I bring it to you, it's going to be a recommendation for approval, um, or if there, if something happens in their responses that I don't feel is adequate, it may come as a recommendation for disapproval because if we just don't do anything, it'll be automatically approved. So, things are changing in the processing, um, but in general, you're not going to see a plat come before you that does not have my recommendation for approval.
But you would do a disapproval if you saw the need to?
Yes, because otherwise it'll be automatically approved.
Yeah. On, on, just a quick, on those forms, is it, can you, can you make it so that when you look at it, you notify the commissioner that the property is in and kind of give them a seventy-two hour heads up or what have you, just so that, because they might know some background that you don't know, or, I know, most of the time we approve all of these, but there've been a couple of them where we've sent it back to the drawing board or it didn't happen at all, but since the commissioners are going to have to, to live with it, so to speak.
Yeah, we can do that, and it, it's actually a good idea since there won't be a preliminary approval.
Right.
We'll give at least the, I don't know if you want it to go to all the commissioners or just the commissioner in that particular precinct.
My initial suggestion, if it's in their precinct, touch base with them.
We can do that, yeah.
Unless all of y'all want to be involved and everybody's, no. I didn't make sure.
So, it's timestamp when it hits your door?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Your desk.
We stamped the application, uh, when it comes in because we have to track that and we have to be on top of it, you know? The initial application, they give us thirty days to respond to, which is, it used to be sixty days.
Right.
So, they cut that in half. That's not too bad, but it's on the recent middle, we've only got fifteen days.
It's the recent middle you have to be...
Yeah, once, once they respond to my comments and make their recent middle, we've only got fifteen days to make action on it. And it, you know, you might be fourteen days away from the next court meeting, so it's going to be timed accordingly. Anyway, in, in this case, I am recommending approval of these plats, they're doing everything we ask them to do.
Does it have to be approved on a regular admissions court or can we come in to approve?
We, we may have to have special meetings on occasion just because of, we got holiday schedules, it's going to be messed up, or sometime we end up with that fifth week with those, those spaces.
Three weeks.
So, there's, some of them, as you will see, will be requested to be on special agenda.
This is in my precinct and I'm permitted. Here's a question, property that lay down here and I don't see any issue with it. Uh, if there's no further questions, I move that we approve the final plat, so breaking down phase one subdivision.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number twelve by Commissioner Dobieinsky, seconded by Commissioner Walker. Is there further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Roden Bridge report, please, sir.
Uh, we're putting out a low rock right now, um, as I indicated last time, the paving operations for the year are complete, um, putting out material, grading roads, working on ditches and trees and such, um, the second drainage crew is fully staffed now and get all their equipment and personnel in place.
What, what was the total headcount on that crew now? Five?
Five.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And they will be located?
They're working out of Iowa. Yeah, and they...
Both crews are working out of Iowa?
No, the, uh, the original drainage crew is currently still working out of Anderson. Um, they will move to the new facility on twenty-four, forty-five when that's complete. The new crew is going to be based in Iowa, uh, and then eventually the old crew will shift down to the new barn. And we won't, we'll keep some, anybody here in the future. The new barn is progressing, they're under, uh, construction on the foundation now, and also we have met, um, with Matt Silcox and working on getting, uh, a small cell tower and, uh, facilities in place for internet service at that location. Uh, there'll be a contract that will come before you sometime in the future on that. Uh, also related to that, uh, we did finally get the property sale on the, the west half of that twenty-four, forty-five property closed this past week.
Good.
And we have the check, you know, in hand now, so.
Good to go there.
And we have, we'll have new neighbors in the near future. They're moving forward, they're anticipating having, uh, a new shop building put on their property in about six months, so they're going to be moving forward also.
That's good.
Now, elsewhere, the, uh, the other new development, uh, the town of Anderson approved last week, the plat and plans for the Dollar General, uh, store here in town that we've been working with them on, uh, so that's all taken care of.
To be located.
It's on the corner of Hill Street and Ninety, on the south side.
Right beside the subway, isn't it?
Kitty corner, no, the kitty corner from the donut shop.
What's the fill-in going in by the subway?
The owner of the subway, um, it's that property too, and they're just filling that now, uh, with the idea that they're going to expand their parking in the future.
Okay.
But that's, that's not the park, so this is on the south side of Ninety and the west side of Hill Street, um, it'd be just, like I said, kitty corner from the donut shop. Tech Dot is still reviewing their plans, um, and I, from the conversation I've had with Tech Dot, I think they're going to ask the Dollar General to put in a deceleration lane there. We can trust that.
That's good. I was wondering about that because I saw the trees going down across the street and I thought, oh, that's going to be a terrible spot, riding that curve.
That's not where they're going. I'm, I'm not sure what's going on there. I've got some ideas, but I haven't got any official information on that.
They had entertained the idea of putting a wash tire in there one time also. I, I don't know if they're still talking about that or not, but...
Looks like Anderson is growing, they're getting the Dollar General.
Yeah.
That's good, that's good, that's good.
I'm listening to Andrew Thomas every night, giving me some...
Thank God.
Call it Anderson Mall.
The mall.
It encompasses all of town.
And then you can see horse riding right down the street.
We need to get a line in, in Anderson so that we can, they would at least have one stop truck.
Might.
I think that's where the line will be drawn.
I, I do have to say, I didn't like to see the trees come down, but it's a whole lot easier to see around that corner to cross Ninety this morning, so.
Yes, sir.
There's, there's silver lining to every cloud. Elsewhere, um, the Anderson Ridge subdivision, it's also out on one forty-nine at two twenty-two, is under construction. We've been inspecting that and they should be finished, uh, putting the road base and everything in this week, um, and then, um, they're also working on their detention bond.
County Road?
It's one forty-nine at two twenty-two. It's on the south side, southeast corner of that intersection.
Wow, that's a lot of development.
Sure is.
In that area.
I've got one other small plat that has been submitted that, um, they have not, uh, they've got things out of hold at this point, but, uh, there are some things, I've had some calls from a couple of folks about other things that might be coming up, so, some things are happening.
There's no place like home, I always say, when I come to Grimes County.
Other questions?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I have a, a comment. I got a call, uh, last week from Ronnie Fitzpatrick who crosses the, the tracks there on three-oh-eight.
Yes, sir.
And he was very complimentary of the work that had been done thus far over there. And glad to see that.
That's actually just the, the first step. Um, we're coordinating a project with U.P. Railroad and Tech Dot. Um, the railroad deck where it crosses three-oh-eight needs repairs, the actual deck plates have been damaged. Uh, our road needs considerable work, um, so we're going to, Tech Dot's agreed to provide the traffic control along one oh-five when we close three-oh-eight so we can do that work. Uh, sometime, the, when we, last time we talked about it, they were saying about three weeks before everybody had everything pulled together, Tech Dot's got their part ready to go, uh, we're ready to go at any time, waiting on the railroad to get all their stuff lined up, so we will be doing some more substantial work in there, but that's, it's just a bad spot, it's hard to, to keep that pavement in shape.
The Union Pacific officer, uh, called me about, uh, a month or so ago, and she was looking for something down on the spur, and I asked her if that was their crossing up on three-oh-eight. She said, yes, and I asked her to go take a look at it. She called me back in a few minutes. Actually, I was coming from Galveston that, that afternoon, from our conference, and she went over there and she said she almost saw an accident there, uh, while she was there. She said, we definitely need to do something with that crossing, so, uh, we got a conversation going with, with Mr. Walker and, uh, Tech Dot and, uh, finally, finally getting some, some, something done over there.
Yeah, it, it's a, it's a bad spot, it, it's so steep and the, the visibility going across that crossing is very bad. I know that the, the county made an attempt at closing that some years ago and the residents objected to that, but, um, you know, it's not, it's not really a safe spot. And we're trying, trying to do the best we can with it.
That seventeen forty-eight, one oh-five, is that just turning lanes?
Seventeen forty-eight, uh...
That's right there by, uh...
NOV.
No, thank you, NOVs.
Two forty-nine, two forty-nine.
Two forty-nine.
Well, is that part of the two forty-nine preparatory?
That may be, I'm not, I'm not familiar with what you're doing there right now.
They're doing quite a bit.
I'll have to look at that.
It looks like they're adding a turn in lane.
Well, that's what I say.
They, they have to widen one oh-five considerably.
Right.
So, that may be what they're starting on because the, the direct connector from two forty-nine is actually going to come down between the east and westbound lanes of one oh-five.
Yeah, because it can be a flyover.
So, they've got to push all that out and move the road over before they can build that, so it may well be what you're seeking to. I'll, I'll check on it.
And then, if, if you're checking on that, would you check on seventeen seventy-four and one oh-five?
They, they're dealing with a change order.
Yeah.
It's taking some time.
Chad told me, uh, two weeks ago, they did have the change order in place and they...
They're dealing with a change order.
Yeah.
That's taking some time.
Chad told me two weeks ago, they did have the change order in place and they should be starting on it.
I think we're going to get the bridge over the Navasota River done now before we get 1774 done.
I've been working on that for five years.
Well, we're working on this in two years now. All right. Thank you.
You're in turn, sir.
Tell your crew happy Thanksgiving from us. We appreciate the work.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We will now go to Agenda Item Number Thirteen. County Judge Joe Fath consider and take action to reappoint Grimes County Representatives for the Blue Bonnet GCD Board. Mr. Kyle Epler, Representative for Rural Water Supplier Interest, and Mr. Matthew Julian, Representative for Municipal Interest of Grimes County. Both of those gentlemen were contacted, have, are currently serving, and they're willing to serve on that board again. So, I put their names before the court for consideration and approval.
Judge, I move that we reappoint Grimes County Representatives for the Blue Bonnet GCD Board. Mr. Kyle Epler, Representative for the Rural Water Supplier Interest, and Mr. Matthew Julian, Representative for Municipal Interest of Grimes County.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Thirteen by Commissioner Cox, seconded by Commissioner Malinas. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item Fourteen, Consider and Take Action to Approve the FY 2020 Interlocal Agreement for Capital Cases Program. See your attachment number fourteen. The capital cases, that's kind of the, I don't know.
Is capital murder?
Yeah, but it's kind of our insurance policy, if you will. We're in a pool where we, as Grimes County, we participate in this. So, we, in the event we do have a capital murder, we don't have to pony up the full amount, which is easily $250,000 to $400,000. Is that correct, Madam Auditor?
Probably even more than that.
A lot more, probably.
A lot more. So, I think it's in our interest. Are there any comments or questions?
Ms. County Attorney.
County Attorney Assistant?
Did you, did the county attorney?
He has reviewed it, yes. And the price has actually gone down.
Yeah, I thought it was ten.
Over $2,000. And it's a two-year contract, so y'all will look at it again in two years.
Need to sign it while we can.
It's based on regional?
It's based on population and how many capital murders are committed in Grimes County, I believe.
Okay, all right.
And then right now, it's, there's, there's not page numbers on here, but it hasn't broken down.
I saw the breakdown. I thought it went down.
Yeah, percentage of total population, average cases a year. So, our population is listed and then average cases a year is .2.
That's good. That's really good. With that being said, if there are no other, if there's no more discussion, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the FY 2020 Interlocal Agreement for Capital Cases Program. And does the judge act as signatory?
I don't know.
That's correct.
Yes.
Second motion. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Fourteen by Commissioner Walker, and seconded by Commissioner Dubianski. There's any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Considering Agenda Item Fifteen, this will be fun. Discuss and take action to change Grimes County Commissioners' Court regular meeting from 9:00 a.m. on the second, fourth, Wednesday of each month to 8:00 a.m. on the second, fourth, Wednesday of each month, beginning in January 2020. Whose brainchild is this? Oh, that would be under me. I just want to share with the court that on the second Wednesday of each month is when BV COG meets. And as all of you have served and Commissioner Cox is just now starting to serve, but I think you missed your first two meetings.
The first?
First, first meeting due to lengthy Commissioners' Court. Granted, lunch is served at noon and then they start the meeting at 1:00. But I think last BV COG meeting, we adjourned here about 1:10, 1:15, something like that. So, the, the real solution is to move Commissioners' Court date. However, looking at the 2020 calendar because of our limited facilities, checked with Cherie, and we're effectively booked out through all of 2020 between the 12th, the 506, County Court at Law, AG Court, Children's Court, and on and on and on. So, we just, we don't have the flexibility to move to Tuesdays or to another day of the week. So, option one is we can start earlier for Commissioners' Court. And I think if we change the start time, it ought to be a regular start because I don't want to, I don't think, it would be confusing to the citizens and to the employees if the second started at 8:00 and the fourth started at 9:00. I think people would get confused on that. Another option is we start at 9:00 and then if we aren't done by, say, 11:15, we go into an automatic recess and then reconvene at 3:00 in the afternoon or something to finish up. That would give us time to, at least, because I'm on the COG, Commissioner Cox is now on the COG, but I'm now serving on the board. I'm the secretary. Thank goodness they have a paid secretary.
I was going to say.
Good luck with that one.
Well. And I want to go back to the reason why we are here so long on Wednesday. I think Commissioner Cox and I both, and I'm maybe just speaking for myself, I suggested a few weeks back, I didn't think it was anything wrong with keeping with the schedule of weekly. You know, we're working, we could still come in weekly, you know, and take care of a lot of things that are timely, things that have to be handled in a timely manner, things that have to be handled in-house, you know, so that our agendas aren't as long as what we've been seeing. When we see 120 pages of contracts and all of this stuff, it makes for long meetings. It gives us just chance, when we have more meetings, to discuss all of the things that we need to discuss. We are now in the process of building buildings. I think it's going to be important for us to keep a handle on that. I think it's also, we're doing courthouse renovations. We have change orders. We're seeing stuff handed down from the legislators that we're going to have to handle more frequently. It would also give people who have things that crop up like we have next week, we have, we've been having a lot of special meetings because things are cropping up and they have deadlines. So, I am still of the opinion that I had no problem with coming every week so that some of these things are handled and out of the way and we're not here all day. I think that if we move to 8:00, then when we have to have public hearings, that's going to push those back into the seven.
7:45, that's okay.
Sometimes we have two or three of them. And then the convenience to our citizens to press and get here. You know, we have really good citizen participation at 9:00. I don't know what that's going to do to them coming in any earlier. And so, that concerns me that our staff has to get here and hustle and bustle to try to make it in here. And then the citizens are going to be hustling and bustling. There's also the option of from second and fourth to first and third, if that helps. I'm just throwing ideas out there. Compromise in 8:30 if that's what you want to do. But I think it's a push for when your employees have to come in, get their stuff together, then get here. And, you know, they're not slated to be here till 8:00, so. But I still have no problem with every week.
Also, when we have people that come in from Austin and Houston.
Thank you.
You know, if we have an 8:00 meeting, they're going to have to leave at 5:30 to get here.
Traffic will be a lot lighter at 5:30 than it would be at 8:00.
They already pressed to get here, you know. And like I said, it's just, even with us, sometimes I don't get a chance to ask the question I need to ask prior to the meeting until I, you know, I'm here and can go sit down and see what the situation may be prior to the meeting.
I thought, the reasons on the agenda today is there's not an issue between now and the end of our calendar year this year. But we needed to start having our discussion because if we are going to make a change according to the, to the code, we do need to establish and notify at the beginning of our calendar year when we're going to regularly have those meetings. But I, and since all of you have served on BV COG, I would think y'all all agree how important it is for our representation to be there because we vote on issues and items and monies on every meeting that are going to affect us. So, we need to have, and if we're not there, some of our sister counties have a tendency to vote their favor and maybe not our favor, which is expected.
Well, the other thing was, we've moved the meetings to Wednesday.
We did.
We didn't have the issue because they were on Tuesdays. So, we were able to get there and get there on time. The other option was, you can have as many members own the COG. We had citizen participation on the COG for years.
Still do.
We have a third person?
We have, Charles Tompkins is on the.
He's still on there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, then, does he know he's still on there?
Yes, ma'am, he sure does.
Okay. I just want to say, I know we only get one vote, but you can have as many members as you want, but you only get that one vote.
And out of Grimes, we have Mayor Karen Hale. We agreed to put her on the BV COG. Bert Miller is on the BV COG.
But he represents the city.
He represents the city, but that's, it's partly in the county. It's within the county. But yeah, he votes his interest, or he advocates his interest over the county's and rightfully so. But he is a member of BV COG. Anybody else? I'm thinking off the top of my head.
No, I know.
I think we have about five that represent, but those folks don't get the opportunity to vote.
But the only other thing I want to say is during budget time, we're meeting every week anyway.
We are, yeah.
So, why not continue the practice of just meeting every week? We have a lot of things that are happening. This county's growing. We're trying to do projects. It won't hurt us to come together, put our heads together to discuss the things we need to do on a weekly basis. I really, really don't like, and it has nothing to do with the treasures office, but just putting our eyes on the bills. Because when we first started doing it, when we changed back to the, twice a month, she was asking for feedback from us and we were not responding like.
Yes, I was.
Not all of us. Because she sent out a notice a second, a third time to, I need to hear back from y'all.
And the county attorney said that y'all didn't need to respond to.
Can't do that. Because that's, discussing county business outside of a meeting.
Well, we weren't, there wasn't a discussion. That was just looking at the, reviewing the bills. She just wanted us to make sure we were putting our eyes on the bill.
Right.
And confirming that we did look at them.
I'll make a suggestion, since we have this conversation with some ideas and if anybody else has it, I'd like to table this for this week, but I need to revisit with Cherie on the court calendar because some of those Wednesdays have been, the first and third Wednesdays may have some court dockets on there. I know that when we went back to just the second and the fourth, that since this facility was available, they started booking some of my guardianship and appeal court cases in this room. And I can be flexible on my time and I can be more flexible on my docket than, say, the county court and the two district courts and the AG. But if there's a kind of a consensus, let's table this. We'll review the Wednesday schedule for 2020. But I know that Cherie has booked some dates for this room already.
Okay.
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
Also, I'm on the animal shelter board and we're starting to meet twice a month. I'm also on bail bonds board, which we meet when we need to. I think it's four times a year. There's other meetings that we have to attend that we have to schedule around too. And I know the judge is very busy with his, with his schedule. So, I'm not foregoing to four, four meetings a month. And I don't have a problem with going, coming at 8:00.
All right. Divisionship.
Well, and two, I think some of our biggest problems is whenever we have that third weekend there, that, you know, maybe if need be, it looks like it's going to be a pretty big one, we could, you know, schedule a meeting before that. But a lot of the stuff that we vote on, we can't have in, under a special meeting. It has to be in a regular meeting.
So. So, maybe we would establish the first, second, and fourth because if we, as regular meetings, if, just an option, and I can bring back some information for the next court. But if we scheduled the first, that would help eliminate some of the agenda for the second, hopefully. And then do the third, and then we could do the fourth as a special meeting as needed or necessary. But to be considered. Commissioner Cox?
I mean, I don't, I'll meet whenever the court feels the need to meet. I certainly don't, I don't mind meeting every other week per se, and I don't mind meeting weekly. But I will say that we've got at least one significant project on the horizon that I think probably, I don't necessarily know that we do it, you know, forever, but we probably need to count on having more frequent meetings just so everybody's on the same game page, everybody understands what's going on and.
Okay. Well, let me do a review of the calendar, what's still available for 2020. And maybe we can go ahead and get an appropriate schedule. If not four, at least three. But if four seems to be the direction we need to go because of what we have going on with courthouse renovation, new building project, and so forth.
Well, there were a lot of things with just one item on the agenda too when we're meeting every week, so.
Yeah. It's kind of a trip for not much.
But we're doing that now. We're doing that now. Even calling it special meeting.
Well, they're lengthy discussions instead of just one, you know.
Just like next week, we have resolutions.
Right. And that was an oversight on the department head with a deadline. But, and then another one, the deadline came up, or we recognize it, and it's a $10,000 grant, but 10,000 is 10,000, so. All right, with the court's agreement, I'm going to table Agenda Item Number Fourteen. Let's go to, I'm sorry, table number fifteen. Agenda Item Sixteen, Discuss and Take Action to Determine the Date of the Commissioners' Court Meeting During the Week of Christmas. Commissioners, Christmas falls on Wednesday, December the 25th. December the 26th, Thursday, this courtroom is available. It would be my suggestion for our normal weekly Commissioners' Court meeting that we hold it on the 26th. Thoughts and comments?
Could we push it back to 10?
Push what?
The meeting on the 26th.
Oh, Christmas party hangover, huh?
Might be, yeah. I'm just saying. Maybe too much turkey.
But it is a regular meeting and our normal regular meeting started.
That's fine.
Is the county closed on Thursday? What is the holiday for Christmas?
That's what I thought it was, two days.
It's closed Tuesday and Wednesday.
Tuesday and Wednesday.
Although I'm sure that there'll be a number of vacations on Monday and Thursday and Friday, you know. So, it might be, and I don't know what the commissioner's schedules are. I plan to be here, but, you know, if we don't have, if we don't have a, if we don't have a quorum, then we would just have to cancel the meeting. But we wouldn't know that until we.
I'll be available.
You'll be available?
Yeah.
One, two, three.
And I'll be magistrates so I know I'm going to be here. All right. So, with an understand, I'll make a motion on Agenda Item Number Sixteen, that the regular meeting for the fourth week of December will be moved to Thursday, December the 26th, with a 9:00 a.m. start to be held here in Commissioners' Court. And we'll make appropriate notification on the website and when the agenda comes out. And we'll make appropriate notification on the website and when the agenda comes out. There's a motion before the court by Judge Joe Fowth on Agenda Item Number 16, seconded by Commissioner Malat. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item 17, Consider and Take Action Regarding the Burn Ban. An authorized county judge's signatory. We are starting to dry up, but we had a little shower overnight and Friday, Saturday, Sunday, it's as much as 80% chance, so I would recommend we leave it, leave it where it is. Thank you for ever saying that. As is. No action? Okay. Any updates on the strategic plan?
Um, we had a meeting yesterday. This ties into the strategic plan.
Mm-hmm.
That all run together.
Those on the jail standards?
We also had a meeting on the jail standards.
Which is part of the strategic plan because it's part of the new building.
Yes. In that meeting, I think Commissioner Malat was there. I think it went well. There was just some things that were identified with the new building that, that are probably gonna need to be, will, will have to be addressed before. Nothing significant that I saw, but...
Mostly clarifications.
Yeah.
Because they didn't want the whole set of plans, so they gave them most of the plans and then there was a few things that were answered within the plans, but there were some clarifications about operations as well from the jail, so.
And I got a list thing submitted to me. It was also submitted to the sheriff.
Same thing.
Okay, the same document?
That was...
The holding cells and ADA bars and all of that? Okay.
Yeah. Which I, I think all the issues were, actually, they're probably addressed or there was a plan in place to get those addressed.
Okay.
Fairly quickly. And then we had the meeting with Vayner that I, I thought was a productive meeting that going forward.
Right.
Could do some, some good things and I'll get with, with you later.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any other items on the strategic plan?
We did recently have a meeting, Commissioner Malat and Mr. Lilly and the CHI St. Joseph in proposed, I guess, changes to the contract, upcoming contract. Their attorneys are working on it to present to the county attorney a new contract and so we are still moving forward with the services. There's been some changes in leadership there, so just had a sit down and roundtable discussion, so.
Is Erin Marietta still there in our contact?
Erin is still there. Mr. Brayley is no longer with the organization.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to Agenda Item Number 19, Motion to Adjourn. Is there one?
I'm going to adjourn.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 19 by Commissioner Wobinski, seconded by Commissioner Malat. Any discussion? Hold on, I'll take a break. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Time is 10:14.